All right, very good. Now, Mr. Anderson, if we can have the official roll call, please?
Yes, this is Director Anderson, and I will call the roll. Commissioner Hing?
Here.
Commissioner Holtz?
Here.
Commissioner Hockes?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
And Chairman Redholtz?
Here. All right, we have all five of us here. Now, Director Anderson, if you would introduce the staff that's available tonight for the meeting?
Yes, thank you. This is Director Anderson. So, we do have several staff members that are here tonight. We have Joanne Burns, our Planning Manager. We have Ivy Tsai, from our City Attorney's Office. We have Mark Persico, our Assistant City Manager. We have Lisa Sherrick, our City Clerk. And we have Ahmad Ansari, who's with the City Engineering. Are you there, Ahmad, now?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Director.
All right. So, we have five staff members available besides myself.
Okay, very good. Then, we will go on with, uh, the approval of minutes from our regular meeting of April fourteen, twenty twenty. Does any Commissioner have any changes to make to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will be approved as presented. The next item is Oral Communications. And this is the time when any member of the public may speak to the Commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the Commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the Chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Brown Act limits the Planning Commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The Commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. A policy of the Commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. Now, I understand we have some people that are interested in oral communication, so I'll go ahead and, uh, turn it over to, uh, our Assistant City Clerk, Lisa Sherrick.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have one comment that was emailed. I will read that into the record first. This is from a resident, Esther Sapian, who lives at twelve thirty-seven South Van Hort Avenue, West Covina, nine one seven nine zero. She is asking the Council to implement signs on sidewalks advising the public who walk their dogs to be responsible for picking up their dog's poop. It should be a fine for not doing so, just like in other cities. There has been an increase of dog poop lately on the sidewalks where I walk daily, near Edgewood Middle School and surrounding neighborhoods. Due to the recent virus pandemic, people are walking their dogs more and are not being responsible or considerate. They should all carry doggie bags. Thank you very much. And that is the end of that public comment. I will now, through the Chair, start calling residents who wish to speak at the meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our first speaker is going to be Mr. Robert Torres.
All right, go ahead, Robert.
Uh, I need to call him one moment, please.
Oh, okay. Hey, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
He's on a public hearing item, isn't he?
No, I believe he wanted to speak under oral communications.
Oh, okay.
Through the Chair, Mr. Torres is ready.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Torres.
Go ahead, Mr. Torres.
I cannot hear him.
I can't either.
There's an audio problem. We can't hear him.
Yeah, we can't hear him.
Yeah, I cannot hear him either.
People on both sides of an issue were mad at you. Done your job right. So, it was at that moment that I understood why so many people were always mad at Jeff. Ironically, it was because he was great at what he did. And as a side note, just today, I saw Jeff's photo on the city's website for the first time. And from the looks of his multicolored shirt, it looks like he was ready to retire a few months ago. So, that was fun to look at. But in all seriousness, being a resident that was closely involved in the planning process of the city and interacted with Jeff often and observing how he was always willing to listen to concerns on both sides of an issue and make a thoughtful recommendation, really spoke to his incredible professionalism and, um, his passion for his work. So, Jeff, on behalf of the residents of West Covina, I just wanted to give you a big virtual round of applause for all the great work you've done and for the community and congratulate you on a well-earned retirement. So, here's to you, and thank you.
All right.
Well said.
Thank you, well said. Thank you, Robert. All right, are you ready for, uh, the next one?
Are you ready? Go ahead.
You can start now?
Yes.
Chairman Redholtz and members of the Planning Commission, this is Lydia Dazara, Senior Administrative Assistant in the Community Development Department. You all know me as the person who attends your meetings and types the minutes. I asked to address you this evening because this meeting will be the last Jeff Anderson, our Community Development Director and former Planning Director, will attend as an employee of the city. I have worked for Jeff for nineteen years and eight, almost eight months. He was hired on September seventh, two thousand, as a senior planner. He was reclassified to principal planner and later became the Planning Director. In two thousand eighteen, he was appointed to the Community Development, as Community Development Director. I've had the pleasure of being his coworker and administrative assistant for most of that time. During his time here, I've watched him mentor new planners, encourage planning interns, and help them learn what planning is about. I'm proud to say that West Covina offers one of the best internships for planning students, and that's because of Jeff. His calm demeanor and confidence in his coworkers is something we all come to rely on. Along the way, we've also made some pretty good memories, including but not limited to the department's annual spring fling, birthday lunches, planning the department's Halloween theme and costumes, Christmas parties, and the occasional impromptu soccer game in the hallway of our department. Jeff, been missed by everyone, especially me. I wish you well in your retirement and hope you'll come to visit at once in a while.
Wow. Thank you, thank you, Lydia. Wow, well said, well said. All right. Are you ready for next call?
Yes, let me dial that number.
Thank you. I think I sense a pattern here.
Mr. Garcia, are you ready? Okay. Go ahead.
Perfect. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission, staff. Ron Garcia, City Planner for City of Balden Park and, uh, former coworker of the City of West Covina Planning Department. Jeff, just wanted to wish you a happy retirement, well deserved. I want you to know what a blessing it's been to have worked with you for over fourteen years in West Covina, not only as a coworker, but a good friend. Your work in West Covina has made a lasting impact and one that has changed the city for the better. We'll all really miss you. I want to thank you for everything that you've done for all of us that have had the opportunity to work with you. And, uh, once this coronavirus has passed us, uh, we can all celebrate with your favorite Costco cake and Little Caesar's.
Kind of a gourmet.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Do you have something to read also?
Yes, so I'd like to read something from Kaiser Rongwalla. Jeff, congratulations. You're leaving behind a great legacy in West Covina. General Plan and the Downtown Plan Code adopted during your tenure are terribly big shoes to fill. Your legacy is also, includes nurturing many staff members that had the good future to work under your leadership and are now leading planning offices in various Southern California cities. I've seen you, you work hard and you work smart during the city's turbulent economic and political path. During tough times, you kept your focus and delivered the desired outcomes. Your absence will be a big loss for West Covina. Best wishes for your next chapter. Please stay in touch. I'll miss you, but you are not forgotten, my friend. Hope our paths cross again. Kaiser Rongwalla.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Wow, pretty cool. Pretty cool. Good to hear from you, Ron. This is Herb.
He is off the line.
Oh, okay, then, whenever you're ready.
I am dialing the next one. Mr. Boucher, are you ready? Are you ready? Please proceed.
Hello, hi, this is John Boucher. I would like to wish, uh, Jeff, uh, a happy retirement. It was a pleasure to talk to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
We didn't hear him.
I guess you're ready for the next one?
I'm calling the next one, yes.
Calling, yeah, I figured that.
Mr. Gutierrez, you're on.
I'm on. I don't understand.
Do you want to speak regarding Mr. Jeff Anderson?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, we, uh, sorry about that.
That's okay. Are you, are you ready?
Mr. Jeff Anderson on his retirement.
Okay. You're on, you're, he can hear you.
Hi, uh, hi, Jeff, good evening. Sorry about that, I was, I was in the middle of something else, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that it was, uh, great, uh, working with you and I'm very happy for you and your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Have a good evening.
You too, Mrs.
I'm calling the next caller. Mr. Hernandez, this is Assistant City Clerk Lisa Sherrick. You wanted to speak at tonight's Planning Commission? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to congratulate Mr. Anderson, Jeff Anderson, for his retirement. And just to say thank you for the time that we, we worked together. Um, I'm a former employee. Um, I worked there for like thirty years and, um, you and I work closely together. So, congratulations, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Lisa, at some point, too, can we get the, you know, the full names of the callers?
Sure, that was, uh, Mr. Miguel Hernandez.
That was Miguel, okay, all right.
The next caller is Ms. Fabiola Wong. Her line is busy. We're gonna go on to Ms. Veronica Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, this is Assistant City Clerk for the City of West Covina. You wanted to speak at tonight's Planning Commission? Okay, you're on.
... and formerly a planner at West Covina. I wanted to wish Jeff well and say congratulations on his retirement at this last Planning Commission meeting. I started as an intern in West Covina and feel so lucky to have had Jeff as my boss for four years. Um, I always knew that Jeff's door was open for any question, no matter how small or frequent. Thank you, Jeff, for helping me grow as a planner and a person. I learned so much at West Covina and my experiences there provided a solid foundation when I moved on. Jeff was and remains a great mentor I'm incredibly grateful to have. Thank you, Jeff, for all your guidance, advice, kindness, and mostly the frequent donuts, pies, and ice cream at staff meetings. Wishing you all the best and a happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Our next caller is Christine De La Sorento, De La Sorento?
Mm-hmm.
De La Sorento, one moment. Hello, Christine. This is Assistant City Clerk for the City of West Covina. You wanted to speak at tonight's Planning Commission? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Christine and I just wanted to congratulate Jeff on his retirement and all the years that he's done service to not only the City of West Covina, but also to all the people that he's crossed paths with, including myself. I'm a little bit, I just, I'm running. Um, but, uh, yeah, I just wanted to say cheers and congratulations and thanks for all the hard work. And I think all of us in the city can say that you're one of the best in life in the world and thank you, I love you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Eric. I do not have a last name.
Oral communication, fifteen minutes.
Eric did not pick up. I'm gonna go to Mr. Alan Hernandez. Hello? Mr. Hernandez? This is Lisa Sherrick, Assistant City Clerk for the City of West Covina. You wanted to speak at tonight's Planning Commission? Go ahead.
Hi, Dave, uh, this is Alan and I just wanted to say congratulations, um, and give you thanks for my time there.
You have a delay?
Do you have it, do you, are you playing the meeting? Yeah, go ahead and mute it and then go ahead and talk.
Hi, Jeff, uh, I just wanted to say congratulations, um, and thank you, um, for being such a great mentor. Um, I'm pretty sure that was been a good year for you. Um, and I thank you for everything that you've done for, for myself, my peers, and for the city. Um, take care and, uh, enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Our next caller is Shannon Yacuzzi?
Yaczi.
What is it? Yaczi.
Yaczi.
Shannon? Okay, there you go.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Honorable Chair and members of the Commission, um, I, like everyone else, just wanted to call and congratulate Jeff Anderson on his retirement. Um, I can't believe, I think I, I think he was there twenty-one years, so, um... By the way, I'm an ex-West Covina employee and currently City Manager in Balden Park. And, uh, he, he, he was there twenty-one years, exceeding my eighteen years. I think he's the last of an era. He's the last, uh, director that, um, I worked with there. So, um, anyways, congratulations, Jeff, on your retirement. Um, it was great working with you. Um, you had a great career. You only made one mistake, is you didn't come work for me in Balden Park. Just kidding. Uh, but anyway, yeah, when this is all over, we'll, uh, throw a party and get you your Costco ca- cake. So, um, take care and keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try Ms. Fabiola Wong again. This is Lisa Sherrick, Assistant City Clerk for the City of West Covina. You wanted to speak at tonight's Planning Commission? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address Jeff Anderson tonight. Jeff and I, um, Jeff, I would like to thank you for the mentoring that you did on my early stages in my career. Thanks to you, I discovered planning and what it can do to improve communities and quality of life for the residents. Needless to say, I was curious and excited to be a planner and follow your career path. Your support included lending me your dressing tools when I was in the master's program. You prepared me for my first interview and you did such a good job that I was hired without any previous planning experience. Years later, we had the opportunity to work together again in the City of West Covina. I appreciated your patience, knowledge, and guidance during my tenure with the city. As my immediate supervisor and colleague, we, we were always willing to, you were always willing to listen, especially when we did not see eye to eye on things. You were always willing to collaborate and be open-minded as we talked through and worked through issues, finding viable solutions. One thing was for sure, we both shared the same vision, doing what was best for the city and the residents. As a friend, colleague, and resident, my family and I would like to thank you for all of your contributions to this community and to those of us in the planning field, as many have mentioned that already. You will be missed. Congratulations on your retirement. My family and I wish you all the best.
This is Lisa Sherrick, Assistant City Clerk for the City of West Covina. You wanted to speak at tonight's Planning Commission?
I, I work for Jeff and wanted to congratulate him. Please, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Now?
Yes.
Uh, hello, Jeff, uh, this is Miguel Nunez. Uh, I worked in the City of West Covina from two thousand five to two thousand seven. Uh, like many of the folks that have spoken already, you were a, uh, one of my first mentors in planning. I really appreciate all the time and effort that you have dedicated to, uh, the profession, the people that worked for you and with you, and also the community that you have served for. I, I don't remember how many years, uh, we were all lucky to work with you. Uh, the community, uh, will miss a, uh, a wonderful public servant. And again, just wanted to say thank you and we wish you, uh, and the city all the best moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
That was the last speaker, Chair.
That's the last speaker? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
We just, uh, had a who's who of, uh, planners. Quite a testament, Jeff, to you. And, uh, I think you'll, you'll hear from, uh, us, you know, later on in the meeting. But, uh, wow, that was really something. It was good to hear those, those people again. And, uh, you know, the respect and admiration they have for you is, you know, is well-deserved. And, you know, my God, you could, you could, even from our great distances apart here, we can, we can feel it. It's really, really something, really awesome.
And, and this is Director Anderson. I, I, I will save some comments till the end, but I, I was not expecting that. And I can tell you that, uh, when I was talking to Lisa and she told me there was thirteen, well, you know Herb, 'cause I called you as well. I was kind of irritated that there were thirteen callers and what were they thinking they were gonna talk about? So, that, I, this is completely unexpected, but I do appreciate hearing all those voices. They're all good people and had lots of good, uh, memories with them. And even, uh, Robert, who's a, who I didn't work with, but I do appreciate that we had some good conversations. So, that, I, this is completely unexpected, but I do appreciate hearing all those voices. They're all good people and had lots of good, uh, memories with them and even, uh, Robert, who's a, who I didn't work with, but I do appreciate that we had some good camaraderie over the years too. So, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I didn't think I could keep a secret, but I guess I can, 'cause I kinda knew that was coming, so, uh... All right, well, I guess we can, uh, dry our eyes and move on to the, uh, body of the agenda, which is, uh, the public hearing, which is, uh, item number two. And this is a precise plan, number nineteen dash zero one, conditional use permit, nineteen dash zero one, variance, nineteen dash zero one, tree removal permit, number twenty dash zero one, mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. The applicant is Matthew Livingston, Ridge Crest Real Estate LLC, and the location is nineteen twelve West Virginia Avenue. Mr. Director, the staff report will be presented, and presented by whom?
Uh, that'll be presented by myself, if I can keep my, uh, if I can keep myself straight after all that.
Yes.
Yes, I'm gonna be presenting and I do wanna do a couple, uh, business things and I already, I wanna make sure that we, are the applicants are still there. So you Matt Livingston and Christopher Hahn and Douglas Pancake. Are you still all three on the line?
We all are.
We're all present.
Yes, we are.
Okay. And then, uh, our environmental consultant, Kevin Ferrier, is he on the line?
Yes, Jeff, I am. This is Kevin.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So we will have those when we get to there, if there's questions that we can have the applicant, uh, and when we open the public hearing, we can have the applicant speak, provide some information. Uh, it's a little out of order, but I wanna take care of it anyway, because this is such an unusual way we're doing things. Um, we do, we did get one email from Mr. Robert Torres and I did forward that to the commissioners, um, and, uh, he didn't, he, he wanted to provide it to you, but he didn't necessarily need it read into the record. So we do have it. If there's any questions on that, we can respond to that. So let me then go through the staff report and as, uh, the Chairman mentioned, this is a precise plan, conditional use permit, variance, and tree removal permit. And the address is nineteen twelve West Merced Road. The site is a triangular shaped lot on the corner of Van Horn and Merced and up against the wash, basically the south side of the lot. The existing site is two point two seven acres and it is vacant, although historically there was a school there, but it was, uh, demolished a couple of years ago. It's been, it's been a vacant property for probably two or three years. The proposal, again, is for a precise plan for the physical development of the site for an eighty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine square foot, two-story assisted living facility with memory care and in fifty-six parking spaces. There is a conditional use permit to allow the assisted living and memory care facility in the R one zone. And then there is a variance, basically to, uh, exceed, uh, standards that the R one zone calls for, and I'll cover that a little bit more. There's three variants that are being proposed. And then lastly, there's a tree removal permit for the removal of thirty-seven trees defined as significant, and those trees are defined as significant because of their location in the front yard or the street-side setback, not because of their species. So there's no oaks or sycamores or, uh, California walnuts on the site. They, they are because of their location. Uh, this is the site plan of the property. As you can see, it's a triangular shaped lot, uh, uh, the, um, although you can't see the street names, the, the street to the right would be Merced and the street to the top would be Van Horn, and you can see the wash. Uh, the, the development has been proposed with the parking, uh, facilities at the front of the lot up against Merced with two drive approaches, one on each side of the lot. And then it is a triangular shaped building with a courtyard in the middle, which is especially good for the memory care facility. There are some, uh, landscape grounds on the outside, but it seems like a lot of their, their proposal is to, uh, provide services and ability for people to go out in the courtyard. The setbacks are shown there, fifty foot on the front and twenty-five on the street side and ten on the, on the wash side. Now you'll see the elevations come up. We have the, the Merced elevation, which is basically the front, and it may be a little hard to, to tell on there, but in the middle of it, there's a, there's a peaked roof, a kind of a gable roof on the first three elevation. That's a portico shade, so you can drive up and drop people off at that location. The rest of the building is set back a bit. On the left side of the building, you'll see it's more of the service area where there's a trash enclosure and deliveries would be made, uh, in, into there. That's up against the wash, so it's not, uh, in an area where it might negatively affect, uh, residential. On the, uh, on the side elevation of Van Horn, you can see on the top, and that's all one elevation, although it's split into two, it's all one elevation with an edge match. Um, if you look on the far, the upper portion and the far left side, you'll see that portico shade that extends out the front of the building. And they've done a good job of providing some different, um, materials and surfaces, um, along that elevation to provide interest. They have provo-, uh, uh, shown us a, um, conceptual landscape plan that shows, uh, landscaping and trees being planted along the front, street side and the wash side with trees also in the courtyard, um, that, and, and you can see the parking layout. And again, I will say that the, the service area where the deliveries would be made in the trash enclosure is, is sort of at the bottom right, um, in that triangular portion there, where you'd come in from Merced and go straight into there, so, and again, that's the wash and on the other side of the wash, institutional uses like, um, Hearst Ranch and there's a, there's a civic club there as well. I can't, I think it's a Shriners or something.
The Masonic Lodge, I think, is.
Masonic Lodge, yes, thank you, Chairman.
Yeah.
All right. And then we did, um, the, uh, CECLA evaluation and in, in reviewing CE, uh, reviewing the environmental situation there, it was determined that a mitigated negative declaration would be required, which we call an MND for short. Uh, there's no significant impacts on the environment with appropriate mitigation measures. Um, we did do some studies, um, we did some cultural resource discussion with what the, the tribal unit that's in the vicinity. We did a traffic analysis. We did a noise and vibration study. We did an air quality and greenhouse gas study and it basically, we found some things that need to be mitigated, but at the end of the day, uh, that we, it can be fully mitigated and we do have the mitigation measures provided in attachment one, uh, the exhibit of attachment one in the staff report before you tonight. So I'm gonna walk through, uh, each one of the, the proposals of, I'm sorry, the applications that were proposed here. The first one is a precise plan. Precise plan is for the physical construction. It also includes a tree removal permit. I, I won't go into that very much unless we have questions. Like we said at the beginning, there are thirty-seven trees that, uh, that are in the front and the side setback, street-side setback that need to be removed for the grading, for grading purposes, so that, that's why the tree removal permit is required. The design is attractive and focuses the, the site to the interior courtyard, so a lot of the activities would occur in the, in the courtyard. It's appropriate in scale and architecture to the, uh, single-family uses around it. Most of the houses around there are one story, two-story, but it is two-story in, in context, uh, and built in similar fashion, in a more of a traditional style to the houses that are, surround that area. There is, as we showed on the conceptual landscape plan, there are extensive landscaping with tree screens along both streets that would help soften the view of the building from the street. And the parking lot has been kept to a minimum and just focused on the Merced frontage with no access on Van Horn, which does, is a generally a residential street, whereas Merced is more of a, a collector's street, um, an arterial type of street. The, uh, conditional use permit is also required and that's for the operation, the use of the assisted living and memory care facility. Facility is intended for residents seventy-five and older, so it's, and a lot of them don't have cars and that's what it's intended for. Uh, as they have shown in their, in their business operations plan, they're, they're thinking they're gonna have about forty employees with a maximum of twenty on site at any one time. Uh, inward-focused services and the neighbors are buffered by the building, landscaping and parking. Uh, there are no significant noise or traffic impacts anticipated with the use of this type, which is obviously is a more, a quieter type of use and, and it isn't a great traffic generator on, on most days of the, the year. Uh, and it also provides a needed service in a residential setting. Then we have the variance. The, the, the reason for the variance is because this site is zoned R one. So it's a single-family zoning, which means the development standards are designed for the construction of single-family houses and accessory structures. This is a use that's allowed in that area, but the, the, um, the development standards were not necessarily tailored for its use. So that's the reason for the variance. Um, they are proposing to exceed the height limit, I think, by six feet for a two-story structure with appropriately designed gable roof. They, you know, they theoretically could meet the height limit, but then they'd have a flat roof and it would change the whole way that building looks. And so we think this is a better, more attractive design. Um, the lock, the lock coverage limit is appropriate for a single-family, which is thirty-five percent, this is thirty-one percent, so this is, um, it, it is appropriate for an institutional or what we call semi-commercial use. And there are those uses, as we just discussed, on the other side of the wash that are very similar to this type of use. Um, then, uh, the, there is, uh, more paving in the front yard than, than R one standards would suggest should happen, but I think that in this case it's appropriate to put the paving where it's located, the parking facility, I should say. And again, reiterate that they did not put any access onto Van Horn, which is really a more of a quieter residential street. So we are supportive of the variance for the reason that this, the development standards were designed for R one, single-family type. City did do a fiscal impact analysis, um, just cover that, 'cause it's the first time, I think, that the commission has seen one of those, but it, it won't be the last. Since the adoption of the general plan and, uh, uh, guidelines in it, uh, new development is required to provide a fiscal impact analysis. Staff hired Adelson Company to prepare that analysis and the applicant did bear the cost and we did work with the applicant, uh, on the preparation of that, uh, fiscal impact analysis. Uh, the analysis evaluates the revenues that would be generated and forecasts the costs. And based on that, uh, staff was able to work with the applicant to agree to a payment of thirty-six thousand seven hundred at the beginning of the operations of facilities with an increase of CPI over time, depending on the, the consumer price index as we go through the years. Um, two things, we do, um, I'm gonna near, this is, we're getting it to the conclusion here, but I do wanna cover that we did, we, we do have a suggestion to modify two conditions. One of those conditions being on the fiscal impact analysis and that's, uh, on the conditional use permit resolution, condition fourteen. Give me a second, I can give you the, the res- the attachment number that is associated with.
I think it's L, I think.
But it's condition L, but it's, it's on attachment three, condition L, uh, I'm sorry, condition fourteen, the other one's L. And, and all this is really saying is that we, we would like to put a, a cap on how much it can increase in a year. So the, the cap would be four percent, so it would go up CPI, but it would be, it would have a ceiling of four percent in any one given year. And we did, the applicant did, we did discuss that with the applicant. They, they preferred that for their own purposes and we're okay with that, so we're suggesting that. The second condition we're suggesting changes in the precise plan, which is attachment number two, and that is condition L, I think. Oh, no, it's condition four L and it's under the engineering conditions and there was some, the original condition suggested maybe multiple streetlights on both sides of the streets. We generally only require streetlights and improvements on the side of the street where the improvement is, is occurring. So that's what this would be, to install new streetlights on Merced Avenue adjacent to the project. So with those two suggested condition changes, I'll come to the conclusion, uh, staff did work with the applicant, have been working with him for, uh, probably over two, well, it is over two years that we've been working with him. They did have two, they didn't have that in the presentation, but they did have two community meetings. They had one about two years ago, at which one of our, uh, the caller in, Ron Garcia, was the one who attended that meeting. Uh, and then, um, they had one in January of this year. Um, so they did do a lot of community outreach. They did obtain, uh, three support letters, which are attached, uh, is attachment number eight in the staff report. Those were support of the neighbor, of neighboring property owners. So they did do their work in trying to provide an attractive and I think, uh, something that is, is consistent with the area that's around it, uh, the design and the, the built form around it. The proposed use and structure are compatible with the character of the neighborhood. The requested variance is a reasonable, given the shape of the property and the fact that it's zoned single-family. And then lastly, they have agreed to, uh, pay for fiscal impacts to offset, um, costs to the city. And that concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Director Anderson. This is Chairman Redholtz. Any questions of staff from the commission at this point? If so, identify yourself and state your question.
I don't know. I think she's.
I don't hear any. Do I have any questions?
I don't know where she's at. She's not in here.
I hear our Councilman Johnson, but, uh, uh, okay. No questions from the commission? Okay. Then I'm gonna open the public hearing and, uh, invite the applicant.
Hold on, uh, hold on, Chairman. I have a question regarding.
Oh, okay.
Didn't hear me earlier. But, um, I wanted to go over the chart that we have. Unfortunately, this thing does not have a page. It's way at the beginning.
The chart of the staff report? Uh, this is Director Anderson. Commissioner, hang in the chart in the staff report? Okay, let me get to that page.
Um, correct. I think it's on page four, 'cause there's no page numbering on the, I believe it's on page four.
Yes.
Um, for the floor area ratio, because you gotta asking for variance, or they're asking for variance and right now they have thirty-five, so with the variance, the floor area ratio, which is point eight three, if it's at thirty-five, how many square footage is that?
Uh...
The foot, the footprint. So basically, the footprint's only allowed thirty-five, point thirty-five, that's thirty-five percent versus...
Correct. So that would be thirty-five percent of, um, give me a second, it's ninety-eight thousand. That's thirty-four thousand six hundred. That, so that's the footprint and then they could go twice that with the second story.
Correct. But then, um, the variance was required for, um, eighty, almost eight, eighty-three percent, basically, correct?
Uh, the variance is for the lock coverage, which kinda goes, uh, which goes along with the floor area ratio, but it's for the, if you go down a couple, um, rows, you'll see the, the lock coverage. That's the variance that's requested. Thirty-five percent.
But so the building footprint... So for the building footprint originally, it's, it's allowed only thirty-five percent of the footprint, but we increased it to eighty-three percent of the footprint, the floor area ratio?
No, so the footprint is the lock coverage. Fo- floor area is, is every...
Okay, so that's thirty, okay, so that's thirty-five percent versus it increases to forty-two percent for the footprint.
Correct. Correct.
And then the floor area ratio is...
The floor i- is not really a limit. Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's a, it's sort of a guideline of thirty-five percent and with houses, then you, you, you remember the administrative use permit where you go through the large expansion and the, you know, but that's where houses, this isn't...
Right, so if it allows thirty-five percent, Jeff, with thirty-five percent, that's thirty-four thousand six hundred and eight square foot for livable space. Is that correct?
That would be the allowed footprint.
Okay. With, that, that's with thirty-five percent, so I'm trying to get to see if, when we increase it to eighty-three percent, what floor area ratio is, how much more square footage is that?
Well, the, the proposed building is eighty-two thousand, I think, if I'm remembering correctly.
So...
Yes, eighty-two thousand.
Eighty-two thou, okay, so eighty-two thousand, so it's, it's really where the original code is thirty-five, so it's, it's like, um, thirty-five percent, which has come out to be about thirty-four per, thirty-four thousand six hundred and eight square foot. So if you bump it up to eighty-two, so the building basically got to be eighty-two thousand square foot.
Eighty-two, correct, it's eighty-two thousand.
In addition, it's almost double the size of the square footage, livable space, is that?
I'm not sure if I'm answering the question very well. Um, the, the, the lock coverage is thirty-four thousand. You can see that there on the row under lock coverage.
I see that. I understand that regarding the lock coverage.
So the floor area, the, the floor area covers any part of a floor, doesn't have to be on the ground. So it includes the second story and the first story.
Correct. But it's only allow, if, if that ra, if we stay with that ratio, it's only allow thirty-five percent, which is thirty-four thousand square foot, versus if you change to variance, the building or the livable space increase to eighty-two thousand square foot.
Correct. That's correct.
Correct? So you're basically increasing the building almost, oh, quite a bit.
We're allowing, we're, uh, I should say that, the proposal is to allow a building that has a lot more lock coverage than a house next door would be allowed.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand this. So basically, by allowing that, they increase the livable space by... Okay, so I'm trying to understand this, so basically by allowing that, they increase the livable space by forty-eight thousand square foot, more than double, correct Jeff? If we were to stay with the existing code, the floor area ratio, they only allow thirty-four thousand square foot, but because we increase and we allow the variance to eighty-three percent, that allows the livable space increase by forty-eight thousand. So, thirty-four thousand that's allowed, when we increase it to eighty-three percent, we allow an addition of the thirty-four thousand, an addition of forty-eight thousand which totals to eighty-two thousand square foot, or livable space, is that correct?
That is correct, I'm not sure.
Am I reading that number variance correctly?
Well, I think that you're, you're assuming something on floor area ratio, there is no cap on floor area ratio in the R1 zone. So, what, what is capped is the lot coverage. So, the lot coverage is proposed at forty-one thousand and they, and, and allowed under the code is thirty-four six, so that's the difference in the increase.
I mean, you said it's not a, it's not, there's no cap, but the thirty-five percent is the cap.
The thirty-five percent is, isn't, it's a threshold that's used to measure when houses need to have a hearing.
Correct, but what I'm saying is that when we change the variance from thirty-five percent to eighty-two percent, basically the building livable space is thirty-four thousand square foot, but we just added, by changing it to eighty-two percent, we just added another forty-eight thousand square foot. Basically, the building almost more than double.
Uh.
The building size, the size of the livable.
I understand where you're coming, I, I understa- uh, uh, Commissioner Hing, I understand what the math you're doing. I guess what I'm trying to get across is technically that is not how that staff looks at or we believe the code. The code says you can cover thirty-five percent of a single-family lot with structure. It doesn't say that you can't build a second story about that.
Right, and no more, and no more, and what I'm saying is that if it's single residential, it's only allow, or single residential, or even if we were to follow what the existing code is, if we were not to give any variance, the building itself, the livable would only be allowed to thirty-four thousand square foot. But because we changed, if we were to allow changing the variance, it would go up to eighty-two percent, eighty-two thousand square foot. So, an additional, almost double the size of the building, livable space wise.
So, I, I. Yeah, so I think part of the.
Just let go, so let's go down to the second variance, let's make it a little bit easier, the height.
Okay, okay.
The height is two stories.
Well, let me, let me be clear, when I'm talk, when I'm talking, what I'm answering is lot coverage and, and you are talking about floor area ratio, we're talking about two totally different things.
All right, let's talk about the lot coverage then.
Variance is for lot coverage. Yeah.
Okay, let's talk about the lot coverage, wh- which wa- where do you want, which eye line item do you wanna talk about first? Lot coverage?
Well, the lot coverage is one of the variances, correct.
Okay, all right, so that's one of the variants, so their total floor variance, let's talk about the lot coverage. So, lot coverage right now is thirty-five, basically the footprint of the building. So, the whole building is thirty-four thousand square foot, but we in, we only increased the lot coverage to forty-two percent. So, this, the building itself, the footprint, just got a little bit bigger, so from thirty-four to.
Thirty-five to forty-two, correct.
Forty-one.
Yeah.
So, it's about seven, seven thousand more square footage in terms of the footprint of the building, so that's lot coverage, okay?
Correct.
So, so I'm gonna move on to the heights now. So, the height is, is twenty-five feet, two stories, which is, which is, you know, that's what is, it's allowed in that area, but if we were to change the variance, thirty-one foot, right, thirty-one foot, that's like you said, another six feet increase to make the roof looks better, okay, I got that.
Correct, yep.
Now, that's one of, of the other variants. Now, moving on to the third variant which is the floor area ratio. This particular ratio right now, it looks like at its existing code, it's only allowed thirty-five. So, out of thirty-five, the building square foot or livable space wise, it's only thirty-four thousand square foot. But when, if we change the variance to eighty-two, then it, the building size would, or the building livable would increase to eighty-two thousand square foot, which is another forty-eight thousand, that, that's what I'm trying to say, it's forty-eight thousand more plus, building livable space, for that particular variant.
This is Director Anderson, let, 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 I just pulled up on the screen the variances because I wanna make sure we're all clear on what the variances are for. Uh, there's, there's four bullet points here. First one's just talking about the R1 standards. Um, the, the second bullet point is to exceed the height limit, which we just talked about. The third bullet point is to exceed lot coverage, which we talked about. The fourth one is excessive paving in the front yard, which is not allowed in the R1 because you're only allowed a limited amount of driveway space, you can't pave your whole front yard. So, that's the third variant, there is no variance for floor area ratio. Floor area ratio is a threshold, it's not a cap and the threshold is meant to require houses to have a public hearing if it goes over a certain, um, uh, percentage. This is, we're having a public hearing, so there's no reason to apply those standards to a, a semi-commercial building. So, that's the reason I.
Well, if we were to talk about, okay, I, I get that, I'm just saying that, you know, that threshold that we're changing from a thirty-five to eighty-two variance, it went up in terms of, that threshold just went up forty-eight thousand square foot, building size, livable space.
It would go.
The mass of the building just increased.
And I think we have a typo, I didn't, didn't notice that.
I just wanna bring that up, in terms of, you know, the percentage, cause sometime when you look at the percentage, it's just under one percent, it's thirty-five percent, then it up to eighty-two percent, the difference is, what is, what we have the threshold right now is only thirty-four thousand square foot, but if we were to increase that variance or the threshold go over that thirty-five percent, we increase the building sizes to forty-eight per- forty-eight thousand square foot. Literally more than double of what the building is regarding the existing threshold.
So, the, i- if, if you apply the thirty-five percent.
Is that, is that correct, like, if, if the, if we're looking at the threshold that's thirty-five?
I don't, I don't know that it is. So, the thresh- the threshold for floor area.
Point of order, point of order. If you're going to ask a question.
Go ahead.
If you're going to ask a question, please give the courtesy to the person that's going to answer that question to finish before you go on with another subject.
I agree, thank you Commissioner Holtz. Please let him answer the questions, Commissioner Hing, you're asking questions but you're talking right over. So, let him answer the questions please. Go ahead Director.
Okay, this is Director Anderson, so, the, the, the floor area ratio allow you to have, uh, a, a, a ground floor and a second floor, so really that, it allows you up to sixty-nine thousand square foot. If this was a house, if somebody was building a single-family house, the floor area ra- ratio would, would say you could have a two-story house of sixty-nine thousand square feet. So, they, they are above that, but I, I, I don't know how to say it any clearer. The, the floor area ratio is a threshold, it's not a cap. The lot coverage is a cap, you cannot go over thirty-five percent unless you apply for a variance. The floor area ratio is a standard that we have in, that was put in the, in the R1 standard to allow, to require larger houses or changes to houses to go through a public hearing and notification process. And that is what we're doing right now, uh, and so it, it doesn't really apply in this case.
Hmm, okay, all righty, you for answering the questions.
All right, very good. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, then I would like to invite the applicants to be heard on their project. Go ahead, Matthew, Christopher, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, this is Matthew Livingston, uh, good evening commissioners. Um, thank you for your time tonight. First of all, I wanna thank you all for your willingness to conduct this meeting in this manner and make sure that we're, um, continue the, uh, important business of the city and the community continues to move forward in these very strange circumstances. Uh, so thank you for being, um, for doing this tonight. And of course, I wanna also thank Jeff Anderson, uh, wanna be the, uh, fifteenth or sixteenth person. Uh, Jeff, it has been a pleasure working with you over the last couple of years. You're absolutely a stand-up guy and, um, uh, I really appreciate you getting us to a hearing before you retired and, uh, wish you the best of luck. Again, uh, my name is Matt Livingston, uh, my partner Christopher Han is here as well, um, and as well as our architect Douglas Pancake from DPA. And, um, so, uh, Chris, Christopher, uh, runs our operations, so if there, you have operational questions, I would, I'll defer to him. And then of course, uh, Douglas is here to answer, uh, any design-related questions. I just wanna give a brief overview of the project and our vision for it, um, and, uh, my remarks will be pretty brief. Um, a little bit about us, uh, we're based out of Glendale. Um, we've got, uh, projects throughout Southern California, kind of across the residential food group from home building to, um, multifamily and assisted living and memory care. Um, uh, we built thirteen assisted living facilities, um, and around the country. Most of our projects are in Southern California now, but under Chris's watch, um, he's built thirteen facilities around the country. Um, and we've, uh, really focused in on the last couple of years of looking for opportunities in West Covina as well as San Gabriel Valley. We've done a ton of market research and we identified that there is a lot of unmet demand even though, um, uh, Merrill Gardens is going up. We included that in our analysis and, um, there's, uh, much, there is significantly more demand than there is supply of assisted living, um, units and beds in West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley. When, when we're looking at a site, we consider a few things. Um, we consider, is there a need in the community? Is there this unmet demand and that was a resounding yes. Uh, there's, we've identified about three hundred units, uh, that need to be built just to normalize the market, just to reach some equilibrium. And we expect that is gonna get significantly, um, be exacerbated significantly over the next, uh, several years and decade as the baby boomers continue to, to age. So, one, is there a need, yes. Uh, two, is this an appropriate land use in the location? Uh, three, um, can we deliver a high-quality facility that we're proud to put our names behind? We're, um, and we tend to, um, to own and operate this facility for a long period of time and, uh, the quality of our, uh, facilities are important to us. And then most importantly, do the neighbors want us there? Um, so, uh, and that also was a resounding yes. Our, um, in talking about the unmet demand, we, 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 our analysis indicates in a five-mile radius that there's three hundred units that are needed to be built immediately just to meet the demand that we have today. Um, and we focused our analysis on a five-mile radius because West Covina Manor, our project, is really a project for the current residents of West Covina. We're not building, what, proposing to build West Covina Manor to attract, um, residents from, uh, Pasadena or, um, or really anywhere further than a five-mile radius. If they come to our facility, great, we'd be happy to have them, but we're really focused on the immediate market area. And this is a project that, um, the intent is where to provide a high-quality.
I like that noise.
Place for, um, high-quality place for the elders of West Covina to, um, to live out their life. So, you know, they're not forced to move, um, far out to Palm Springs or somewhere else where there's many more facilities. It's meant for the men and women of the city that have built the city, that they have a place to stay if they get older and can be close to their families. So, yes, there's a need in the community, um, uh, as far as a high-quality project. Um, I think, um, Jeff, uh, Jeff did a great job of, you know, providing some of the highlights. It's a high, highly amenitized project. Um, the shape of the site actually ended up being a blessing. We were a bit concerned by the triangular shape, uh, but when Doug and his team were done, uh, putting a site plan together, uh, Christopher and I were, were, were blown away. Uh, the way that the courtyard works in the middle of it, um, providing, uh, a ton of light to our units, great access to the courtyard, uh, great marketing windows, you walk in, the entry of the building, um, will have, you know, beautiful windows looking out of the courtyard and then, uh, as you walk around to the dining area, it's the same thing. So, we're really able to maximize bringing light into the project. Um, and ta- and I'd like to talk a little bit about, um, what I mentioned was the most important concern of ours is do the neighbors want us there? And we spent, early on in this process, we met with, uh, we had a community meeting before we, um, just as we put the property under contract and we were just starting our due diligence, we had a neighborhood meeting and, um, uh, the neighbors that showed up were either, um, mis- some misunderstood and were ready to rent a, rent a unit from us at that time, which we were glad to see. And other residents that live on Van Horn came out and were, uh, very happy to see that we were proposing not only something on the property, uh, because it's, um, I think been a bit of an attractive nuisance for them, uh, but to have such, uh, an appropriate, uh, land use in that location. Um, so, eh, we're in, we're in an area that transitions, as Jeff mentioned, the transition's from commercial to residential and we're kind of a hybrid, um, hybrid, you know, housing product. Um, and right, you know, right now because of the wash there, because the site, uh, it's just vacant land, I think there, there, uh, were some issues with people dumping on the property and just some transient people coming through, so I know the neighborhood is very eager to have something constructed there to keep, you know, uh, keep eyes on the street and activate the area. And, um, so then in meeting with the neighbors, I, you know, not only do we have two, um, neighborhood meetings, but I've actually pretty much gone door-to-door on Van Horn and have talked to as many of those neighbors as I can. Uh, several of them invited me into their homes and we had, um, I think very productive meetings where I presented the project to them. And, uh, those are the support letters you've seen because the people were very eager to, um, to, to help us and lend their support. Um, we've been, uh, very, I think, sensitive to them. We, uh, no, we have no vehicular access onto Van Horn, so all of it comes off of Merced. We have, um, located, as Jeff mentioned, we located, uh, our service area and our loading area along the, um, along the wash and kind of on the commercial side of the property, so away from Van Horn. And I think most importantly, we put in a twenty-five-foot landscape, uh, buffer on Van Horn to our property, to our building. And, and no one, no one asked us to do that, that was an initial design requirement of ours, um, that we, um, wanted to make sure that we can, that we could stay, um, significantly set back from Van Horn and offer that up immediately before, you know, anyone tried to push us into doing that. And I think that, that garnered a lot of, um, support and trust from the neighbors. So, that would be a meandering sidewalk for our residents, it, uh, works really well for exercise for our residents. And I think, I, I, I forget what the allowable step back is there, I think it's, it's either fi- I think it's five feet, it may be ten feet, but we're, we're at twenty-five feet, so we're significantly, um, set back from there. And it's just gonna be a beautiful landscape area for the people on Van Horn, um, to see and, um, and then I think what, we're designing a beautiful jolting behind it. And, um, of course, uh, the neighbors are happy to see that we will be very quiet neighbors. Our residents typically go to sleep very early, they, um, almost entirely do not drive. Once in a while you'll have someone when they first get to the community and just them bringing their car and typically within, um, you know, a few months or so, uh, they get rid of their car. So, it's very, it's really just staff, um, traffic and they're also, um, you know, usually not arriving during rush hour as well. Uh, so very minimal traffic, to no traffic impacts, no impacts at the schools, practically no impacts to the parks. Um, and I think everyone appreciates, um, you know, the role that our elders have played in our, uh, community and, uh, people I think are eager to, to help them and, uh, help provide a good living environment for them. Um, I also wanted to mention that we have our onsite managers, a group named ISL, they're out of Carlsbad. Um, they are very, um, very experienced company, uh, they have about four decades of experience. They currently operate in nineteen states, uh, they have eighty communities, twenty-four of which are in California. And they will be our onsite manager, so, um, uh, their, their staff will be onsite. Uh, they will help process the administrative component of this as well and help with their licensing. So, they're a very strong, um, experienced team and, um, and that's, uh, really the conclusion of my presentation. So, thank you very much for hearing me out tonight and, um, and, uh, myself, Christopher and, uh, Doug are all available for any questions, but thank you for your time.
Great, thank you Matthew, this is Chairman Redholtz. Uh, any questions from any of the commissioners for the applicant? Identify yourself and, uh, let me know if you have questions. No questions? All right. Uh, Matthew, anyone else from your team wish to speak or did you cover it for everybody?
I, I mean, I think we're good unless there's some specific design questions, um, but, um, I think that, I think that covers it for everyone.
Okay, and that management, uh, company you mentioned, they, you worked with them already, right, in other locations?
Uh, yeah.
ISL?
Um, yes, we've worked. Um, yes, we've worked with them on four or five different locations.
Okay.
They're excellent.
All right.
Uh, excellent group, will be in very good hands.
Okay, very good. So, no questions for Matthew or his team? If not, I will uh, are there any other speakers on this uh item in favor? Jeff?
No, I don't think we have any other speakers. Um, just to remind you, we did have the email from Mr. Robert Torres. But other than that, there's no other speakers.
Okay. And uh, any, any opposition speakers or emails or anything?
No, we had, we received no, no uh requests of proposition.
All right. Then I will go ahead and uh close the public testimony portion of the hearing and we will go to commission discussion. Uh, who would like to go first on this, or should I just name a name?
I can go first, this is Don Holtz.
Commissioner Holtz, go ahead, please.
You know, I've been on the commission for close to twelve years and I have to say, this is one of the, the best projects I've seen in a long time, where they've made absolute uh maximum use of the property, which was kind of an award location. But it's a, it's quality, uh, the, the residents are for it and that's, that's a good thing too. But it's, it's in a location that's going to be quite quiet. You've got the, the wash on one side and behind the wash, you've got a uh, not a church, but a Masonic temple. And then you also have the farm that's there. So, there's really no noise that's gonna leak out over there. And Van Horn and the other, and those people are all for it. It's a quality, quality location. And like I said, I've seen a lot of these come through, uh, but this is one of the best that I've seen i- in my time on the commission. And it's, the people are very interested. Uh, management companies very interested, doing all they can to uh get the peoples okay. And I was at one of the first meetings you had when you, when you brought this out and I, I was very excited about it. And I was wondering if you were gonna come through with all the things you had promised and you have, and you have in my, my estimation. So, I wish you good luck. I'm definitely in favor of it. Uh, it's gonna be a quality act. Uh, it's far enough away from um the, the center city, if you will, to get away from the uh noise and the impact. But it's close enough where you can go shopping and many restaurants in a very uh, uh short order. And uh, so that's, again, it's an ideal location. I don't know what else to say. It's a quality act location and I wish you the best of luck uh with this and I'm certainly in favor of it. Uh, one thing though, with Jeff uh Anderson retiring, uh, you might wanna consider him moving in there for a little while. We can put up with it. But I'm in favor, I'm in favor of this uh, uh, project. It's really a quality, quality, and it's a quality location and a quality construction. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a special rate for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. Commissioner Haquez, you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, just briefly, I just wanna um, um, to uh support everything that Commissioner Holtz had to say, um, for all the same reasons. And I'd also like to add that, um, you know, uh, sort of having my own connection to this industry through my wife's work. She works for, for a company that provides assisted living facilities. Uh, we've got very familiar with, with the business over the years. And uh, again, I, I wanna reiterate what Commissioner Holtz said, this is definitely a quality project. And, and uh, I wouldn't be surprised if we see uh more of this occurring in West Covina and in the region because it, as, as we heard from uh the applicant, the, they're, you know, it's a, the market is gonna continue to grow as the baby boomer generation ages and it's very, very much needed uh facility and services. And so happy that it's, you know, being, it's gonna occur here along with the other developments going on in, in West Covina that are providing assistance here. Um, just a, and it's such an essential service and such a, a great quality addition to our community. I'm very, very pleased and I congratulate you for the, the quality work you've done um on uh, on putting this project together.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Haquez.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Anything for you?
Uh, I, I absolutely love the project. It's quality work. Um, all the issue I had was the parking, but um, that's all been met and I, I have no issues. I wish them the best of luck and um, let's move forward with it. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this project.
Okay, great. Commissioner Heung, comments?
Well, I, I see that there is a need in terms of assisted living as the aging population is coming through. However, I, I like to, you know, I mean, the design is good, but I like to see, you know, in terms of like, um, there's a huge mass on Van Horn. If possible, we can, you know, look at that. Um, other than that, I'm okay with it. Um, I'm a little bit concerned about the mass as well. I mean, it seems a little bit massive in that area, but then again, one side is the wash and the other side is the big street on Merced. So, I'm okay with it as well.
Okay. Let me just uh make a couple of, a brief comments. I just want to
Chairman Redholtz?
Yes.
Let me just, let me just remind me, you only have a five-minute limit.
Thank you. Let me set my stopwatch here. Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. Yeah, this is Chairman Redholtz. I'm, um, you know what? The way this developer has gone about this project from day one, this is textbook. If you wanna get a project, you know, in front of the commission, if you wanna get the, the affected neighbors and neighborhood uh on board with you, just do what they did. Right from the get-go, they had public, you know, public uh, uh, community meetings, they brought in the neighbors. Uh, the, the, Matthew went door-to-door, like you said, knocking on people's doors and presenting the project and sitting down with them. And that effort pays off because this is, this is a, you know, it's, it's a big deal on that street. It's a change. And, you know, to have, and I realize, realize it's kind of a different situation with the, the way we're doing things, but still, you know, nobody uh sent a letter in opposition, nobody is speaking against it. Uh, so, you know, that speaks volumes in, in how to get a, how to get a project. And it also does help to have a quality project. And if you look at this, I mean, the, the design, the architecture is perfect. It fits into the neighborhood where it's gonna sit. Uh, you know, you look at the design on that and it, it looks like, I mean, I, I used to, you know, live many thousands of years ago in St. Louis in the Midwest area and this looks like, you know, a, a Midwestern uh, you know, hotel. You know, I mean, in St. Louis, I saw a couple of them back there, looked just like this. And, you know, this uh is perfect. And the way they laid it out and designed it, it's gonna work, it's gonna work fine. And uh, you know, kudos to them for going about it the way they did and uh, you know, the variances make sense to me, I understand it and I see the need for it. And uh, I think it's gonna be a quality project. So, uh, without any further uh comment, I will go ahead and uh, uh, get the resolution number.
Chairman Redholtz?
Yes.
Chairman Redholtz, this is, this is Commissioner Holtz. One of the things I, I forgot to mention, and I don't think anybody mentioned it, but being that this is a retirement uh community, they are very, very close to medical facilities. Uh, with the hospital there and it's just a short run. And I think that's very important, very critical, and I think that ought to be included in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yep, the location is good. It's all good. So, is appropriate now to have the resolution numbers read, uh, Director Anderson?
Yes, this is Director Anderson. I can read you those numbers. There's be four of them. Uh, the first one will be the mitigated negative declaration, which is twenty-dash-six-oh-three-two. The next would be precise, the precise plan, which is twenty-dash-six-oh-three-three, followed by the conditional use permit, which is twenty-dash-six-oh-three-four. And the variance, which is twenty-dash-six-oh-three-five. And I also would remind you that we did request a modification for those two conditions, so that should be included in the con, uh, in the uh motion. And those are for the precise plan, the conditional use permit.
Yes, okay. Commissioners are good with that? Do I have a motion on these, please?
I'll make a motion.
May we have a motion by Commissioner Holtz? Is there a second?
Uh, Commissioner Haquez, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Holtz, a second by Commissioner Haquez. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Heung?
Hi.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Haquez?
Yes, 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 yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
And Chairman Redholtz?
Just one "I" and it seems to work fine. So, the motion passes five-zero. Congratulations to all those involved with this. We look forward to watching that project go up and uh to get filled up and it to be a, you know, a uh, a part of this community for many, many years. And we thank you for bringing it to West Covina and congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you for the kind words.
Sure.
Thank you, everybody. Really wonderful.
And, and Director Anderson, what, uh, just, Director Anderson, just a, a couple busy uh work things. That, that was a motion as amended by the, by the conditions and Commissioner Redholtz, uh, on the next page, you may wanna uh cover the ten-day appeal period just for um business sake.
Yes, yes, yes. I was, I was, yeah, this, this decision is final and let's appeal to the city council within ten days. Now we are leaving. All right. Now we can move on.
Thank you again.
Maybe I could, uh, just, yeah, I think, Director Anderson, I, I think I, I'd like to excuse those people that were on the call for that, so our
Oh, sure.
city engineer, Ahmad Ansari, who was there for that
Who's awesome.
item. And uh, our environmental consultant, Kevin Ferrier, and the three representatives from the applicants, we appreciate you tuning in to this tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Anderson.
Is the, is the city attorney still on? Ivy?
I am here, but you haven't given me any work to do.
Nothing to do. That's good. That's a good thing.
But I am very
All right.
Here.
Yes, very good. All right, let's move on to uh item number three, which is code amendment number twenty-dash-zero-four, general exemption, wide location. Mr. Anderson will be presenting the staff report on this.
Our planning manager, uh, Joanne Burns, will be presenting the report and we're gonna do some COVID cleaning, so give us a second before she starts her report.
Understood, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission and also members of the public at home. Um, the item before you is code amendment number twenty-zero-four regarding the residential agriculture and um single-family residential standards. Um, a little bit of background here to begin with. Um, on February twenty-five, two thousand twenty, the planning commission held a study session, um, in, in its initiated code amendment twenty-dash-zero-four. Um, at, during the study session, the planning commission was discussing the state man, um, accessory dwelling unit mandate. And it was determined that changes to the R-one or R, in R-A section of the West Covina Municipal Code was necessary as a result of this mandate. Although this is the case, um, this code amendment is not related to accessory, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Um, one of the changes that is included in the, the draft code or code amendment is to section twenty-six dash sixty-two and section twenty-six dash sixty-two, and, I'm sorry, in section twenty-six dash three-nine-one sub, subsection two. Uh, definition was added for um habitable bonus rooms, but instead of calling them habitable bon- bonus rooms, we're gonna go ahead and um, staff is recommending that that name be changed to non-habitable bonus rooms instead. I, um, the definition of a non-habitable bonus room would be a detached structure used for private recreational purposes, accessory to a residential use with, with its own separate exterior entrance or access. And um, standards were also added for non-habitable bonus rooms, which, which is, um, it's limited to two hundred square feet. Um, no more than one non-habitable bonus room is allowed per lot, no interior bathroom or no kitchen. Um, it has to be sited behind the primary residence, it has to be sited ten feet away from another structure. And you are, um, a property owner is not allowed to have a habitable bonus room if they have an A-D-U or J-A-D-U on their property. In addition to that, standards um and limits to the non-habitable, a non-habitable bonus room would have to be agreed upon through a covenant that's required to be recorded at the county recorder's office. Another item that was changed is regarding um adding on to um single-family residential structures or homes uh that are not, that do not have a garage or have a non-compliant garage. Um, currently existing garages are allowed to be converted into ADUs without replacement. The West Covina Municipal Code requires four parking spaces to in which is gonna be, is required to be contained in the garage and to uncovered for all house, for all houses constructed after um January first, nineteen ninety-three. Um, and the, this January first, nineteen ninety-three date will be removed or has been removed in the draft ordinance. Um, and in addition to that, house additions are limited to um three hundred square feet for residents with no garage or non-conforming garage or non-conforming parking. So, basically, if they have, if they don't have a garage, they, or they don't have non, if they, their park, parking is non-conforming and they wanna add more than three hundred square feet, they would have to add a garage or they would have to provide rooms um so that um the parking requirement is complied with. Another section that was changed was section twenty-six dash four-zero-two-point-six, subsection B-two and also subsection E. Currently, the maximum driveway width is based on the width of the garage plus twelve feet. Since the ADU ordinance now requires garages, or allows garages to be converted into accessory dwelling units without replacement, some properties are left without garages. So, um, in this case, the, the maximum driveway width is now twenty feet or has been there in at twenty feet if there is no garage on the property. But however, if there is a garage of, um, on the property, that has not changed, it's still the width of the garage plus twelve feet. Another change, another change that was done is that, um, is for second-story setbacks. Um, with, um, the draft code requires two-story setbacks for structures with exterior wall heights um greater than twelve feet, infrastructures with an overall height greater than sixteen feet. So, um, the reason for this is um so that tall structures are not allowed to tower over, um, neighboring properties or over the street. Cause, uh, cause some, um, some structures are, are currently right now are allowed to be like sixteen foot tall, uh, with a flat roof, um, kinda like the diagram or the picture shown on the screen. And they, and they, um, they're only required a five-foot setback, which is a single-story setback. So, in this case, um, we're increasing that to a two-story setback. And um, to the right, um, right along here is a depiction of what a next year wall height of twelve feet is um in relation to a sixteen-foot overhaul, overall building height. Another section that was changed, it was the section pertaining to animal keeping over, the animal keeping overlay zone. Um, in, in this section, it's just a clarification, um, the code clarified The code clarified that bonus rooms proposed on the lower pad area of properties in the animal keeping overlay zone require an administrative use permit. So basically, right now, currently, if they are, if, if you're in the animal keeping overlay zone and you, you have like a guest house or, or some type of habitable structure on the lower pad area or you want to propose one, it requires an administrative use permit. Because we, this is something that we would want to limit because if, if they do have habitable space or similar space on the lower pad area, they, the neighboring property owners would not be able to keep horses on the property which the animal keeping overlay, overlay zone is designed for. With this, the staff recommended the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of code amendment number twenty dash zero four to the city council. If the Planning Commission has any questions, Jeff and I are available to answer.
Thank you, Joanne. This is Chairman Redholtz. Any questions for staff from the commission? If so, identify yourself.
Commissioner Holtz.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Holtz.
Uh, I just want to clarify. I think we have a code amendment right now in the city that you're only allowed to have three dogs, I think it is. Is that correct, Mr. Anderson?
Director Anderson?
Sorry, I think he was on mute. He was on mute.
Oh.
Well, maybe, maybe one of, maybe one of the staff can help.
They, they tried to shut me up really, you know, before, before I was really leaving. I apologize for that. The, the, I don't remember if it's three or four dogs, but there definitely is a limit on the number of dogs that, and cats that can be, that are allowed in a house.
Okay. With this, what we're talking about today, is that going to change that? Or will it be allowed to have like three pets on that property?
No, it wouldn't, it will not change that.
It will not what?
It will not change it.
Okay, so it'll apply to those too. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff from the commission? Hearing none. Uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, public testimony. Do we have any, have we received any, anybody want to speak on this, for or against staff?
I was told by the city clerk that we, we did not receive any requests for calls or any public written comments.
Okay, very good. Then I will go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and we will go for commission discussion. Who would like to go first on this item, either a discussion or, and/or a motion on this item? Anyone?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kennedy. Um, I go that we approve this, make the motion?
You want to, you want to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, staff, can we have the resolution number? We have a motion. See if we can get a second.
Yes, staff resolution.
Before we make the motion, Chairman Redholtz, I'd like to, um, add some of the comments that I have regarding this code amendment.
Okay.
One of the things that we, earlier, was regarding the, um, the parking issue. We just approved a earlier subcommittee meeting. And apparently the garage was, was a concerning issue. It's like now that they converted the garage to an ADU, which is allowed by state code right now. But that particular house becomes, you can say, two units or duplex and with no garage is one, the driveway area that they can park. With this particular limitation here, that we're saying driveway without a garage, we're allowing only, only footage of parking. But that's really only limited to the duplex, the only two-car garage, two, two, two parking space in a garage. I guess my thing is that with this particular code right now, we're, to some extent, we have to kind of mitigate, but what type of codes that we have to work with. And also, are we limiting our residents who have more parking spaces off-street parking space? So that's something that I like to talk about and some of our, even our commissioners was concerned in the past regarding that more and more people are parking in the street. However, if we're, if we're not, we need to have discussions about that. Because if ADUs are allowed and they're converting all the garages to ADU and there's now, that particular lot has no parking garage. And if we limit this twenty foot, that's only really two parking. But that's, let's just say each unit, a house in, in ADU that can go up to twelve hundred square foot house, which is like, you know, maximum is a three-bedroom, we're only having two parking, which each family has two cars, four space, two will be on the street, at bare minimum. So as commissioners in this particular code right here, I know, I mean, it's a long night, but we do need to address that issue and I do have a concern with future parking issues. And I know some of our commissioners have issues with that as well. Not necessarily issue, but a concern regarding parking and how parking will impact the city and the parking the street. Because the whole block will change because of how we want it. But because of, um, planning department, where the staff had mentioned that predominantly right now, most of the, most of the project that comes in is requesting for the ADU. So within a couple of months, even with COVID nineteen and all, we almost have more requests for ADU with, for the whole year of last year. So it seems like it's a very popular event and I'd like to see if we can have a discussions about that and see what we can do, perhaps come up with something that we can help the, helps to have more parking on the, or encourage to have parking built on the, on the lot itself. Because there are two, two concerning issues. One is the parking size, twenty feet. Twenty feet only has, you know, you can only park one car. If that is the case, then really if the other two cars, if they have four car, unless everyone's taking a bus or drive or, or walking, then the other two car is going to be on the street. Then the other items that we have issue with is regarding the two stories and the twelve foot and the sixteen feet heights for the ADU, which is the second story setback. And, you know, but the height's like that, really we're only encouraging one single story. And if that is the case, then the garage, you know, you cannot add a garage on the bottom and then encourage people to build on top to have like livable space on top. And land is, it's scarce now. And with adding more units on it, it makes it even worse and then there's no for, for parking. So that's something that I like to at least address and issues and hopefully our commissioners would like to talk about it for our future residents and what's going to impact our city with ADU issues or issues, um, the impact of ADUs on our city.
Okay. We get a response from staff? They can unmute themselves?
Oh, sorry. So, um, for, for Commissioner Hing's first point regarding the driveway width being limited, limiting parking to just two parking spaces. It would be, it's true that it would limit parking to two parking spaces if it's, if the cars are parked side by side. However, it also depends on how long the driveway of that particular property is. So a lot of the, a lot of the garages that are being converted into ADUs are rear yard garages. And so they have a driveway width that's almost the length of, or the length of the depth of their property. So they're like more than, I would say, like sixty feet deep. So in, in that instance, it would allow for six, six vehicles or even, and sometimes even more. There are properties with garages in the front that are being converted into junior accessory dwelling units and ADU. And in those cases, yes, it would be limited to, it would be limited to, to cars as far as onsite parking is concerned. Right now, the current code, the maximum allowed paved area on the current, that the current code allows is the width of the existing garage plus, plus twelve feet. So if the garage is converted into an ADU, then, then, then the property would not have a garage. So there, there wouldn't, they wouldn't be allowed any paving in, in front of their house. So there would be no, no allowable parking space in front of the house without this code change. So right now, we're just doing everything by policy since, since we don't, we haven't done the code amendment yet.
This is Commissioner Holtz.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Holtz.
Um, I think Commissioner Hing brought up some good points. What about, what are we going to do with people that have like jet skis and stuff like that? Are we going to change that or what are we, like on this project, or not project, but on this, uh, thing that we're talking about, what about if they park jet skis in one of their spots or something like that?
So, um, jet, jet skis and, um, jet skis are only allowed to be parked in, in, um, in the side yard. They may park jet skis in the front yard only if they are approved through an administrative use permit process. So that's when we send out neighbor notification. And if there, if the jet ski is taking up parking space, that, that would result in the property having no parking on the property itself. It's, I don't believe that that's something that we would approve through the administrative use permit process.
Okay, so if I, if I'm just a single resident, you know, type thing, in other words, I don't have two cars, can I park one of my cars there and is either one of the jet skis or does it still have to be in the side yard?
It's still, currently by right, it has to be in the side yard.
Yeah, okay. All right. I, I know people are going to misuse that. They always have and they still are. But I think we ought to have it in black and white so that code enforcement's got some teeth.
Um, we do have a separate, separate section in the code regarding, um, recreational vehicle parking and which includes jet skis and, um, and RVs.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holtz. Any other commission comments or questions? I don't hear any. Okay, shall we revert back to the, there was a motion on this by Kennedy? Is that correct?
Yep.
Ask, um, Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm here.
Hey, um, Kennedy, I was wondering if you would like to comment and see if you can add on to the parking issues? Because you had mentioned in the past that, um, the area, you know, you have some concerns regarding parking. I'd like to see if you have any thoughts on this.
Well, my issues are always, parking's always been an issue. And, and when you build projects or you have projects, we always have to have sufficient parking because, you know, um, somewhere down the line, we never have enough parking. Now, if you're talking about the homes and adding on, if you're going to add on to your garage, remember, there's no restrictions of parking in the street. So there's no overnight parking. So if, if, if you want to turn your garage into a, another room, then, you know, you got to give up something. So, um, then park in the street. Um, very, very, very few streets are restricted. So I, I, I don't see any issues here.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Hearing none. And I am hearing none. So we have a motion by Kennedy. Is there a second to Kennedy's motion?
I have one question, mister.
Oh, all right, go ahead. Go ahead.
I, if, if Commissioner Hing wanted to table this till, till the next meeting or, or later before discussion, I have no issue with it, just so you know.
Well, you made the motion. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I did make the motion. No, I'm just saying, I've given her the option.
Okay, well, you have a motion and I'll go ahead and second the motion. So we have a motion and a motion by Kennedy, a second by, by Redholtz. May we have the resolution number, please?
Yes, this is Director Anderson. The resolution number would be twenty dash six oh three six.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. The resolution number's been read. May we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Yes, Director Anderson here. Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Holtz.
No, it's saying that I think we need to have more talk on this rather than a quick vote. They're just, I think they're just, as Commissioner Kennedy had said, it's going to continue to get worse with, with the homes going in and everybody being able to do basically what they want. It's just going to impact the parking. I think we need to have some more discussion on it. So for right now, I'll say no.
And naturally, I'd like to withdraw my, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. Is it possible to withdraw my vote and change it? I'd like to change my vote, how's that?
Well, I guess that's okay, isn't it? I think it's okay. So, all right, so, uh, I have a no.
Well, okay, wait. Can I, can I, all right, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Kennedy. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, okay. If you want to discuss this more, I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw it and let's discuss it at a further meeting. I have no issue with that.
Okay. Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion?
I'll, 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 yes, I will. I'll withdraw it for, so we can have this further discussion.
So do you want to make a motion to, what, table it? Is that, would that be appropriate?
Yeah. Is, is that the appropriate way to do it, to table it for the next meeting?
Attorney, you can, you can make a motion to continue the item. Usually that would take it, you would set a, a date for it to come back. If you table it, there's no date for it to come back.
Okay.
And then we'd need, and it's your pleasure, Commissioner Kennedy. Then we would need to renotice it. We'd need to put it back in the paper if we, if it's not to date certain.
Okay.
Which one requires renoticing? The, the tabling or the, I didn't get that.
Yeah, the table. This is Director Anderson. The tabling would. Let me, let me also say a few things here. One of the things we've been specifically trying to do here is separate this R one standards discussion from any ADU discussion. Because this isn't about ADUs. This is about, uh, this is about the standards we have in the code that we have to react to based on state law changes. So, uh, I, I guess I want to warn you that it, it sounds to me like you want to discuss ADUs and what their implications on parking, because that's really not what this code, this code is about. We have another code amendment that's going to be coming forward on ADUs and that would be the time that would be appropriate to talk about what you can or can't do with ADUs. So I, I guess, I'm not saying you can't, you can't continue this and ask for more clarification, but I do want to warn you that, you know, this, this code amendment is not about ADUs. This is about R one standards and what people can do with their single-family houses given other types of things that might happen.
Okay, that's good to know. With that understanding, what is the commission's pleasure? Do we still want to go forward with tabling this or do we want to? Understanding that this is not really an ADU discussion with this particular item that will come later, do you want to, uh, what's the commission's pleasure? Do you want to make a motion again or do you want to go forward with tabling?
Uh, I think it's, Commissioner. Go ahead, this is Commissioner Holtz.
I, I like to, I'm sorry, oh, hello?
Go ahead, Commissioner Hing. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I, I think I like to be able, table it and have a discussions and have some more thoughts and maybe have some input from the community as well if we, if we can, you know, do that. and maybe have some input from the community as well, if we, if we can, you know, do that with the COVID nineteen and whatever. And I'm not sure if we're gonna, how long we're gonna do the phone, um, for a long time.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If we can have that discussion, I would, I would like to see that happening.
Okay, alright.
I can tell, this is Commissioner Holt, I can tell you what the, the answer will be with the, with the, uh, public involved. But if that's what you wanna do, that's fine. But now that I hear that the, uh, uh, this is gonna come about in the near future. Jeff, what's the near future? Do you have any idea?
I'll let Planning Manager Burns, I don't know where she's at with, she's working on the code amendment for ADUs. Do you have a date on that at this point?
Um, at this point, we do not have a date on that. We are waiting for a response from the state. We did, I, um, in early January, we sent the state, the city's, um, urgency ordinance, a copy of the city's urgency ordinance pertaining to ADUs. And we are waiting for the state to comment on the city's code, um, so that we can make some modifications and bring it back to the planning commission for, for, um, any changes. Um, as well as, um, do another study session to discuss the comments that the state has provided. But at this time, we have not received anything from the state.
Okay, I, then I recommend maybe we do a study session on this. Pardon?
You wanna do a study, well-
And this is Commissioner Hockes.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hockes.
Okay, I, I think for our benefit, it'd be nice to have a little bit of clarification because of, um, some confusion in my reading, uh, in the, you know, the staff report here. The background does read that, um, the code amendment twenty one zero four was brought forth because of the state's ADU mandate, um, and although this, this code amendment is unrelated to the ADU ordinance. So, you know, uh, Jeff, you know, advising us that, you know, this is not related to the ADU ordinance. It, it is, this code amendment was brought, brought forth because of the state's ADU mandate. And for example, uh, in section twenty six dash four oh two, uh, or proposed, uh, for section twenty six four oh two, adding three hundred square feet, um, I mean, uh, properties with additional greater than three hundred square feet, they have to provide for off-street parking spaces to which were required to be enclosed. And three hundred square feet, I think it's a result of an ADU addition, correct?
This is, this is Plan Director Anderson. Uh, I, I would agree with what, how you stated it. It's as a result of, it's not about ADUs, it's as a result of state. So we're, we're trying to make that separation and, uh, to be clear, we wanna make that separation because any changes to the ADU ordinance, in our ordinance, we have a section about ADUs. When we talk about ADU ordinance, that's what we mean. We don't need to mean anything that might pertain to something that has an ADU on it. Anything that pertains to the ADU ordinance, we have to send to, uh, the state.
Yeah, so the, at this, three hundred, uh, greater than three square feet could, could be, uh, as a result of an ADU addition or, or some other addition that's not an ADU.
Correct, that is correct.
So, um, but, but the end result is, it could, uh, it could affect the amount of parking that can be provided, you know, on that property as a result of that addition. And so, um, I, I, and so to the extent that there is a bit of an indirect connection to ADUs proliferating, as we are starting to see, uh, I, I think, and that's something that we talked about in the, the plan subcommittee. Um, I think, I, I would, my, 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 is to continue this item. And if it means having to publish the public hearing again, you know, still be it, to continue this item. Because my, my concern, and I think I share this with Commissioner Hing, is that the proliferation of ADUs being one subset of additions of square footage on properties is gonna trigger, uh, an issue with parking, uh, and, and vehicles being pushed out onto the street in rather large numbers potentially. And that is a quality of life issue, uh, for the city that, that does concern me. Uh, uh, and it, you know, just the fact that the state is, you know, forcibly imposing, you know, um, densification of, of, uh, of, um, our residential areas with the, with the ADU, um, law, state ADU mandate in that separate, uh, uh, separate grade there. Uh, but that is a concern of how it affects the quality of life while, you know, suddenly a street that didn't experience a lot of on-street parking, uh, suddenly you get, uh, uh, on a street with, on a close access street with, you know, with, uh, thirty homes and, and half of them, you know, suddenly have, you know, have got permits for ADUs. And those fifteen, those fifteen permits are gonna result in thirty more cars parked on the street. That's a quality of life issue and that, that's something to be concerned about. So I think, you know, we should give it some time to address this in, do, regard, you know, regardless of the fact that it's not directly related to ADUs, it's a, it's gonna be in a side effect, a side effect coming, uh, coming. And I'm hoping we can continue it for that reason.
Yeah, it's a byproduct, that's for sure. Yeah, this is Director Anderson. It, it, there is no question, it's a byproduct. It, it's a reaction to, but it's not about. Um, and I think that there's no, there's not a great big rush on this. It's something that'd probably come into play in the next year or two where we get, getting things. There are also, as, as I, I like the way that Commissioner Hockes put it, this, this is a subset of issues. We, we do have houses in the city that legally have no garage. There are a, a, a certain minority number of cases out there that are like that. We also have, uh, certain neighborhoods that only have one car garages. So th- those also would, uh, uh, apply in those cases, well, as, as, well as a case where a garage may have been destroyed or burned down or some, some other issue. So, you know, there, there are other situations beside that. And I, I, the staff is not here to suggest that, uh, we are in favor of the, I, what the, uh, state did for the, uh, accessory dwelling unit law. I think you have all heard us discuss that. Uh, we are reacting to, not, uh, we're not promoting that or think that it's a good idea. But the state is promoting it and other cities are promoting it, counties are promoting it. So the word is out there that you're not gonna, you put the genie back in the bottle at this point. So, um, but I think if you wanna have further discussion, that's perfectly fine. I think the option, uh, would be to continue indefinitely. I'm not sure. If you wanted, if you were gonna do that, I think the suggestion would be, you're, you're gonna be asking for further information from staff that we need to research. If you just wanna have another discussion on it, a further discussion, it could be continued to the second meeting in May, and you can have further discussion. Cause it, so far, I haven't, I haven't heard any, uh, requests for further information, just that you wanna have further discussion. So that, that's, that's maybe, uh, helping to move this pro- uh, uh, item forward tonight.
Okay, Commissioner-
I, for one, this is Chairman Redholtz. I'd like to get more information myself.
Okay, Commissioner Hockes-
What's the rest of the commission?
Did I like to make a motion to continue this item indefinitely as we request? Uh, and request more information from staff on, uh, options for addressing, um, uh, the, the, the two subsections that relate to, um, you know, on-street and, uh, or, or parking on, uh, properties or, um-
Off-street parking, it's called off-street parking, Commissioner Hockes, yeah.
Or off-street parking and, and driveways, uh-
Uh, this is your attorney. Um, Jeff, are you comfortable renoticing it because we're not continuing it to a date certain?
Yeah, we can renotice. There's a cost. The, the biggest issue with that is there's a cost to the city. It's several hundred dollars. But, but we, it's not difficult to do.
Because what you can do is you can continue it to a, a future date when you think staff will be ready. And if for some reason it's not ready, um, for that meeting, we can do a further continuance.
Okay, so this is Chair Redholtz. We could just, we could just continue it to, we'd have to pick a date?
Um, yes, I, I would like to request that if the, if the commission is gonna continue it to a date certain, I, I would like to request that that date certain would be June twenty third.
Okay, was that June twenty third?
Yeah, thank you for that recommendation. Then, then my motion-
Maker of the motion, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Continue it to June twenty third. The attorney suggested it could be further continued to that point if necessary.
Okay, that is the motion. Do I have a second on this?
Oh, Herb, do, uh, I mean, Jeff, do I have to withdraw my, my motion?
Uh, I think you did, Director. Yeah, I, I heard that you did. That's what I heard.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so Commissioner Kennedy, are you seconding Hockes' motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this item until a date certain, June twenty third. May I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Hing?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hockes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
And Chairman Redholtz?
I'm old fashioned. I say aye. So, the motion passes five zero, the item is continued till June twenty third. Thank you for that lively discussion, everyone. And where are we at now? We're on, uh, item number four, which is a non-hearing item, a study session. A request to initiate a code amendment, Plan Community Development Number One, PD, uh, PD one, which is the Woodside Village area. So may we have a staff report, uh, please?
Yes, this is Director Anderson. Um, we have a, a, a certain zoning district called Plan Community Development Number One. We shortened that to PCD one. It's the Woodside Village area, which is a, a good portion of the southern part of the city from about the BKK area, well, even nor- further north of that, from about the, uh, Fair Grove Street area, all the way down to, um, La Plente Road. It, it's a, it's a, encompasses a lot of area. And it was a development kind of concept that was, uh, put out in the seventies and, and, and adopted. And we haven't really updated the wording. We don't really have a concern, uh, in general on the, the standards. It's the wording and the way that it's set up and also that it's a resolution and not an ordinance. So it's not in the code. So that causes lots of people concerned. They're calling us, trying to figure out how to know what zoning standards. So it, it, it does cause some confusion in the development community and with, uh, property owners. And we think it might be a good idea at this point, some forty years, some odd later, to, uh, put that in the zoning-
Yeah, why hurry?
Yeah, no hurry. Uh, but put that in the, in the zoning code and write it, uh, in what would be more standard zoning language. So that, staff is suggesting that. We're also, you know, thinking that right now, the way things are with COVID, it might be a good time for us to be doing some drafting and to provide some, um, some good benefit to the city, um, with the time that we might have, uh, till, till we're able to open the doors again. So th- this is the reason why we're suggesting it right now. Um, and if, we would, we would request, uh, there is a resol- a resolution that's attached to that, so we would request a motion, a second and a vote on that resolution.
Okay, very good. And I assume we don't have any public comment on this that we've received?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Any, uh, questions from the commission? Hearing none. This is kinda just cleaning this up, which needs to be done. So is there a motion on this?
Um, let me, uh, uh, Director Anderson, one, there's, there's two things that we're gonna be doing here. Uh, we don't really have it clear on the, in the agenda, but this, the resolution is for a, a code amendment and a zone change. Cause there are some zoning issues there we'd like to clear up. But that would come after the code amendment was completed. So just, just to be clear on that.
Okay, and this goes to the city council once we've acted, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, I'll go ahead and move the item. Is there a second?
Commissioner Hockes, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chair Redholtz, second by Commissioner Hockes. Roll call, please, on the motion?
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Holt? Turn your phone on, Don.
It is. Aye.
Aye, okay. Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. So that motion passes five zero. Alright, where are we at? We're at commission reports, comments and miscellaneous items. Uh, you know what, can we do the, do you have anything on your community development director's report?
Um, well, we have forthcoming. There are no items for the May twelfth meeting, but we do have items for the May twenty sixth meeting. So there will be some hearings, so expect to have a meeting on that date. And we also have provided you the subcommittee for design review minutes from, from February. That is all I have to report.
Any city council action?
City council action on a code amendment for film standards. It wa- was presented to the, the planning commission at a hearings, a little, I think in March. Uh, the, the city council discussed that and has asked for the, uh, send it back to the planning commission to look at some things. So that is one of the things that we expect to have on the May twenty sixth agenda.
Okay. Alright, well, now I'm gonna go back to, uh, uh, commission reports and comments. Uh, let me just kinda pick up on where some of the, uh, emails, not emails, but some of the, uh, public comment were. And, uh, you know, let me just say that, you know, I've worked with, uh, Director Anderson, Jeff Anderson, for many, many years. And, uh, you know, as was stated by, by one of the, uh, one of the callers, that, uh, you know, Jeff is the last of the, the old guard, I guess you could say. You know, everybody is, uh, you know, moved on, retired or gone to another, uh, position. But, uh, you know, I mean, I, I just, uh, Jeff, I wanna thank you for all the years of working with you. You know, it, it's been a, an absolute pleasure. Uh, you know, I worked with you when, uh, you know, when you were second to, to Doug Mackaisik. And before that, I was coming to meetings before I ever came on the commission, and that was back in two thousand and five originally. So, you know, uh, I've learned a lot from you. You're, the way you handle your commissioners, the way you deal with us, it's a pleasure. You know, you're, you're, you're even keel and, you know, no matter what, you're, you're right with it, man. You're just, uh, you know, just go with it. Deal with it, handle it and take care of it. And the same thing, uh, you know, when, when the public comes forward. I mean, you're just, uh, you know, just that kind of a guy. And it's, uh, you're, you know, the right guy in the right position for all these years. And, uh, I've learned a lot from you. When I, when I call in or we discuss things to, uh, on the agenda, you know, you're, you're, you're unflappable. You know, I mean, you, you respond to every question. I mean, sometimes it, you know, it, you know, as a professional, it might go, boy, that's, you know, in your head, you're thinking, oh, that's a dumb question. But, you know, it doesn't, you answer it anyway and it comes out and we get the answer. And, uh, you know, we're all better for it. So just to kinda make it quick, again, it's been a pleasure working with you. I couldn't have asked for a better planning director all these years. And, uh, you know, I wish you the best in your retirement with your family. And, uh, you know, on behalf of myself, and I, you know, I, I'm sure the, you know, the residents of West Covina, most of which, you know, don't know who any of us are, and that's probably a good thing. But, uh, I appreciate everything you've done and I wish you nothing but the best. And, and, uh, you know, I'll let my other commissioners, uh, weigh in on it, whoever would like to go. Who was that?
Beat, five minutes are up.
Go ahead. Oh, that's my time? Thank you, the official timekeeper with the gruin' watch. Yes, sir.
I'm X.
Go ahead.
Me, Don? Okay.
Go ahead, Don, Commissioner Holt, go ahead.
I couldn't, couldn't have said it better than, than, uh, Herb said it. I've been on the commission now for twelve years and I have to really compliment you for dealing with all this, you know, oddballs and putting me on the top of the list with some of the things that have gone on. You've never, you know, started screaming or tearing your hair out or, of course, you grew up, I've smoked, smoked tea a couple of times. I don't know if that was, you know, an act to do it, but you did a really great job. And you're very easy to talk to and, uh, and get answers. And I will tell you, I worked in corporate world for a Fortune five hundred company where, you know, we had supervisors and managers and all that. And you really are a class act. I mean, some, sometimes you can't approach these managers and all that or they blow up. And you've never done that. You've always remained calm, professional. To me, you're a true professional and I applaud you for that. We're gonna miss you and, uh, you know, I wish you the best of luck. And as a man said, livingstone is gonna keep an apartment over here for you. When you're ready to get, ready to give up Kansas City and maybe root for the, for the Lakers and for, uh, you know, the Chargers and what have you. So, best of luck to you, really. It really is, uh, been a pleasure working with you. Good luck.
Very good. Uh, so you're assuming professional sports is gonna come back. That's good. I, I like-
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Who wants to go next? Hockes?
Well, Jeff. I'll go next.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff. Commissioner Hing, go ahead.
Um, well, what I'd like to say is, Jeff, I learned a great deal from you, considering that, you know, I'm relatively new in terms of, as a commissioner. And like many people before you, whether it's your interns, your staff, or many of the directors who left, you know, learned a great deal from you. And same here, I learned a great deal, even though at times, even through the meetings, you guided through all that. Um, at times, communication was quite interesting. And you always, you know, very professional and try to get the job done and for the better of the futures and all, you know, for the, for the cities and all the staff. I mean, a lot of people may not know it, the residents, but you put a lot of years into our city. And I, for one, like to thank you for everything that you've done and it's learned a great deal from you as well. Thank you. And I'm gonna miss you.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Hockes, you've, uh, you've only worked with Jeff. Hear from you.
Um, I, uh, been, you know, ver- only, uh, this very short time, of course, on the commission, although, uh, been, you know, hanging around, uh, city, the city government, uh, and planning functions a little bit before that and, and got a little bit of exposure, um, with Jeff before that and was, from the very start, so impressed with, you know, his, you know, Jeff, your professionalism. Um, I, I think you add a lot of the very, um, nice things that Herb, uh, said about you. I would, I would sum up in, in one word and, you know, there's, I don't, uh, get to use this word very often with a lot of the people, uh, that I hang with, so it gets, it gives you an idea of the kind of people I hang with. That you're just truly a gentleman, a, a gentleman. It's such a amazing, it's something that's al- almost becoming, uh, sort of an archaic word and description, but it's so befitting of you. Um, I'm, I'm, um, very, um, you know, proud and pleased to, um, you know, be able to work with you this short period. Uh, but it's, uh, but it's been, uh, far more enriching, uh, than, than, uh, can, uh, than befits the short time that, uh, we, we've worked together. So, uh, congratulations and I really, and I wish you the best.
All right, very good.
I'll come, I'll come. The guy that's been on the commission the shortest has the longest farewell.
I, I have to yield that sometime. Uh, Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Big stab at it?
I wanna say thank you, Jeff. Um, I know I've only been on the commission for probably a year, but I, I've been a commissioner for fifteen years. Um, it's been a pleasure. You're a, a very kind and gentle person. Um, thank you for always taking the time to answer every one of my questions. And I, I, I will tell you this, buddy, uh, when I retired, it was nice for about the first three months. And then everything that you, it'll get old real quick, so I, I hope you find some type of hobby. So, anyway, good, good luck, my friend, and, and, and well-earned. Good job, buddy.
Very good. You know what? Let me just, uh, of course, I have to always have one more thing. But, uh, you know, Jeff, you know, the, it's a testament to your, to your abilities and to your professionalism and to who you are that all these people that, you know, uh, worked with you and, uh, you know, either side-by-side as staff or in other capacities called in to, you know, with the accolades, because, you know, there's nothing better than to have your peers that are in the same business and profession that you're in to call up and just, you know, give you the, you know, that kind of a send-off. And, you know, nothing can replace that. You know, that is just really the epitome. When your peers have that kind of respect for you, there's nothing better than that. So, and it's well-deserved and, again, you know, I mean, I'm gonna miss you a lot. You know, I'm, I'm kinda, kinda glad I'm, you know, I'm, this is, you know, really my last full meeting as, as chair, you know, and I'm kinda glad it is. 'Cause I've enjoyed working with you so much, you know. I mean, uh, you know, the road ahead, uh, I'm sure it'll be good, but, uh, you know, it won't be the same. So, again, all the best and, uh, uh, go ahead. You wanted to, you wanna say something, Jeff?
Well, yeah, I, I, this is Director Anderson. I might wanna say a few words here. I, I kinda did a quick calculation. I think I've probably attended about four hundred planning commissions over the last twenty years. And they've all been great, a great deal of pleasure and, and, uh, as you can imagine. So, um, and probably about that many, or about two hundred city council meetings. So, it, it's a lot of meetings and, um, you know, that, I, I pro- I, I, Glenn's told me that before, what he just said, and I, I do respect that, that I expect that to occur, but I'm not sure I'm ever gonna miss, uh, Tuesday nights, uh, being here late, late at night and having, get up early Wednesday mornings. Um, the, um, you know, I've worked with literally dozens of staff members, both, um, and I'm really focusing on planning right now. There's a whole bunch of other people I've worked with in other departments, but dozens of, of, uh, staff members in the planning department and really dozens of interns. And some of them I've been, there's, there's a combination. Renee's a good example from who's an intern and now he's a full-time staff member. Veronica and Christine, who you heard from earlier, the same way. Um, you know, I have to give a lot of, of credit for anything that I've learned and been able to accomplish to people that I've worked with here the longest, which is Doug McIsaac, Fabiola Wong, Ron Garcia, Sherry Sinclair, and then Lydia Dizara, who's actually stuck with me the whole time, which I know is a surprise probably to all of you, that she was able, willing and able to do that. Um, but, but those guys have had a profound impact on my life. Um, but I, I have considered it an honor to, uh, be able to work with all the interns that I've worked with and all the other staff members that I've worked with over the years. One of my greatest, uh, one of the greatest things that gave me chills was when I went to a, a seminar and that seminar was being run by amongst other people, two of the former interns that, that I had had. One of them was Miguel Nunez, who you heard from tonight. He was running the show and he'd been an intern. And, you know, I, we'd be started with that. That, that's, and, and other staff members, Ron, Veronica, Christine, they've gone on to other things that have, that they promoted and, uh, and they're doing great things. And I really, I, I've considered it an honor to, to have them as friends and they, they, whatever they've learned from me, I've, I've learned a lot from them as well. Um, I wanna say that, you know, I've been, I've been happy with some of the projects we've dealt with, uh, and, and there's some things that give me a great deal of pride. I, I feel like we worked really hard to get the colony development into a state where it hopefully sets a, a, a bar for what comes afterwards. So that, that, that project, and be greatly excited when, when, or if we ever get some kind of commercial development in there, but, um, or commercial use. But other things that I've been really proud of is the completion of the general plan and then the downtown plan and what, what we're trying to achieve there. Uh, the subcommittee, which was something that we formulated, uh, Doug McIsaac and I and, and planning commissioners back in the early two thousand. That, that's how that came together. The house design guidelines that this commission has been very involved in, but whi- which former commissions have been very involved in. Um, all those things, I, I'm very proud that we've been able to a- accomplish those things and, and, and hopefully put the community in a place that it, it, it is, it gets better every year. And then lastly, I just wanna, uh, because I'm, uh, sitting where, uh, Glenn usually sits at this meeting in the hall where nobody's at, right? And I have the gavel in front of me, so I might could make a request that you allow me to adjourn the meeting with the gavel, 'cause all this time, thirty years, I've been watching people gavel things and I've never got the gavel. So that is my request, if, if, if I would be so honored by the chairman. And I do appreciate-
I am honored, sir, to grant your request.
Okay, and I do appreciate all the work that I've done with these commission, with you as the commissioners, and I'm gonna miss each of you greatly as well. So, thank you very much.
Did I hear the gavel? Are we ready to adjourn? So we're gonna adjourn and I appreciate- Oh, I don't know, are we? Uh, I, I guess we are. Here's the gavel.
Let us have it.
All right, so here's the gavel. We are adjourning this meeting at nine-twenty. Thank you. Very good. Congratulations, congratulations. All right, I guess we're adjourned.